Okay.
Okay, now we can officially get underway for the regular meeting of the Kletzup Planning Commission for April 11th, 2023. And I will call a meeting to order and ask for those present to stand and salute the flag.
Barry, there's an empty seat over here. I want you to come over.
Good morning. Missioner Johnson just arrived in the nick of time for the roll call.
Right.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
If we may proceed with the roll call.
Jason Crashhour.
Present.
Jeremy Linder.
Here.
Carrie Johnson.
Here.
Katie Pritchard does not appear to be in the meeting. Mike Magyar.
Here.
Clark Powers.
Here.
And Chair Farrar.
Present.
Thank you.
Well, we've all had a chance to look at the packet and see what the agenda is. Are you all willing to accept the agenda as it's presented here?
Got it. We're back on.
Okay, I think we're ready to roll here. We had somebody just was sure we weren't getting their instruction right, so they kept telling us how to operate the system. But we'll begin with the first main item on the agenda then, seeing no, nobody from the public wishing to speak from the virtual world.
Are you ready for your presentation?
Check that one last time. I don't see any hands raised. So we'll move into the first item, which is a presentation by Adam Argo of the Oregon Department of Transportation. You may have the floor at this time, Mr. Argo.
Thank you very much. First of all, I hope you all can hear me. And then I'm about to share screen, if that's all right, and I'll run through slides.
Sounds good.
Okay, I appreciate that. And members of the Kletzup County Planning Commission and audience, my name is Adam Argo. I am a principal planner with the Oregon Transportation, or Oregon Department of Transportation. I am statewide based, so I report to Salem. And I'm here to present on the Oregon Transportation Plan. We have had a major update in the works to the plan for two years now. And so we're nearing our glide path to getting the plan to adoption by the Oregon Transportation Commission. So I'm glad to have the opportunity to talk a little bit about it with you today. And so for the agenda, I wanted to start with some context of why plans needed and process for how it's developed. Talk about how we've been shaped, how we've been informed by the public, their involvement in the plan. Key takeaways, how to review and provide comments, because we are in an open public comment period for the draft Oregon Transportation Plan. And then next steps, getting to that final adopting action by the Oregon Transportation Commission, as I mentioned. And then hopefully a little time for Q and A, depending on go to the order for your schedule. So what is the Oregon Transportation Plan? It really is kind of, if you think of our umbrella of statewide plans, it's the umbrella where it sets the vision and informs investment decisions by ODOT in regional and local governments for all the ways people and goods move around. So it includes getting around in all manner of ways on the system. Walking, biking, highways, railroads, public transit, freight, even planes and airports and ports are considered in the aspect of the OTP. And while the OTP doesn't identify specific transportation projects, it does contain policies and strategies guiding the prioritization and the balancing of investments affecting transportation projects across the state. It also considers sustainable funding options to meet the diverse needs of people using the transportation system. The plan was first adopted in 1996, then had a major update in 2006. So this represents the next major update to meet the current and future needs of Oregonians for the next 20 years. But really, we look out to a horizon year of 2050. And we have to consider some hard truths in thinking about the entire life cycle of transportation assets and programs. And that is that we will have to consider trade offs and compromise. We think about aging tunnels, bridges, congested roadways, missing sidewalks, bikeways, investments needed across the system to address these issues. So this is an opportunity to create a more sustainable, equitable system. It's about getting Oregonians where they're going safely and efficiently, hopefully even bringing some joy to the experience. It does direct ODOT, but it's important to note in this, the OTP is listed in Oregon Administrative Rule for the Oregon Transportation Commission to manage and consider the state's entire transportation system. But it is administered and executed by ODOT in directing ODOT in what to do. There, in thinking of the OTP as the umbrella plan, there's the consistency requirements and elements that go all the way down to the local transportation system plans. You can think of the Oregon Transportation Plan as the state's transportation system plan. So a little note on the development process, as I had mentioned earlier, the project kicked off officially about two years ago. And we have been doing a lot of robust engagement across the state. I will note it's been virtual, because the entire time we've been working on this project has been, you know, during the pandemic. And also, we have found that the tools, such as the one we're using right now to engage you, the Zoom and other platforms like that, have given us the ability to get folks from all across the state where in the past, it's been either expensive or just not within people's ability to make time to travel to Salem or to the Portland region or Eugene or anywhere else where we have tried in the past to convene folks. And so it's been very effective to be able to utilize those tools. And we, down at the lower part of those graphics, you see work groups, policy coordination committee in the Oregon Transportation Commission. I just want to make mention that the primary steering body to making recommendations on what's in this plan was driven by a policy coordinating committee. And that some 20 members, and they represented different areas of state and government, as well as advocacy, as well as industry. And so they convened about nine times. And those work groups, they can see down there on the bottom left, were really more about getting in the weeds on developing policy. And they were the same kind of things we were targeting for representation. It also included at-large citizen representation, both on work groups and the policy coordination committee, which is a bit of a first for ODOT in terms of this level of a plan that we brought people that really, we looked for their own community representation and perspectives to help inform the plan. And then the Oregon Transportation Commission, as I had mentioned before, the advisorial body that directs ODOT, appointed by the governor. They are the ultimate adopting entity for this plan, and their charge will be to implement. So a little note, we've done some robust engagement. Round one, you see that in fall of 2021, a heck of a lot of email, a heck of a lot of online engagement. We convened focus groups from across the state, representing different areas of the state, as well as their perspectives. So we've really tried hard to get as many people aware of what we're doing and also to help inform what we need to understand about people's experience every, on a day-to-day basis of the transportation system. How is it working for them? How is it not? And again, we did a second round convened late last year to winter this year. And that's where we had developed some of the draft concepts, policies, and the investment scenarios that we are looking at to help us understand, looking out to 2050, where should we be putting our emphasis and priorities on spending? So the draft plan, and if you got your packet, I believe you got our fact sheet, which points you to where you can access the full draft plan document, has seven chapters. And I just want to key on a couple of things here. Where the introduction is really about setting the stage of what the OTP is and does. When we say key drivers of change in chapter two, drivers of change really refers to what you could think of as exogenous pressures on ODOT as an agency and other agencies in terms of what's changing in transportation that relates to technologies. But it also relates to severe, you know, the severe weather, the massive wildfires that we've had. It also absolutely refers to issues around safety. We have a concerning trend and a rise in pedestrian deaths and serious injuries. We also have a major funding shortfall trajectory. So those are aspects of key drivers of change where we try to frame, what is it ODOT can control? What is it that we can think about that's within agency control for the entire system? Then what are some other things happening outside of it that influence? And that also includes good things, such as the bipartisan infrastructure bill that passed and what that infusion of money can mean for the state. Chapter four is about vision and values. Going to assume you've all have some interaction with long-range planning in the past or in the present, and that a vision statement is a pretty common element in a plan that looks out as far out as it does, 20 to 30 years. And then values is what drove us to getting some goals developed to the plan. Chapter five, which is called policy framework, is a bit of a new thing for ODOT in terms of statewide plans. It's really where we're trying to state, we have some urgent issues and needs. And that's what's really going to drive policy, the many policies and strategies and actions that are found in this plan. And then chapter seven is about implementation of the plan. It cites the fact that we need to coordinate with regional and local governments. We need to understand how government coordinates with the private sector. It's about coordination also with tribal consultation and other requirements like that, as well as our investment strategies. What are scenarios that we looked at that try to cast out where we could go, given certain ways that money comes in and that it's spent according to the policies and strategies in the plan? So our vision statement is about Oregon's transportation system supporting all Oregonians, connecting people and goods to places in the most climate-friendly, equitable, and safe way. So that was driven a lot by our advisorial process of those committees I referred to that we engaged with throughout these two years, the policy coordinating committee and the work groups. And then where you see what we want to advance, these themes that are those bullets are really what drove us to developing six foundational goals, which I'll be talking about. So the policy framework that I had mentioned before, this is where we really like to consider it a call to action in the plan. We need to address the wrong direction of trends around safety in transportation. We need to center equity and address past norms, but really it's about meeting good outcomes to benefit all communities throughout the state. Reducing GHD emissions, securing sustainable, reliable transportation funding, recognizing we're on a wrong-way trajectory as far as the kinds of revenues that we're generating and the needs we have to invest and maintain the system. And about maintaining that system, understanding the maintenance needs, as well as completing our critical connections. We're trying to make complete multimodal networks. And this plan is a helpful piece to get us there. And enabling the efficient movement of goods and services. It's considering freight, both from the long-haul aspect to getting to port, all the way down to local delivery. So one of our goals of the six is economic and community vitality. We have numerous policies in this draft plan document, don't want to have to read through those. So what we've done is tried to convey our big ideas of what's found in these policies, strategies, and actions about providing multimodal access to places around the state. Because we know that for a thriving economy, recreation, tourism, and commerce are all a big aspect for the state. Moving goods and providing access to services in an innovative way. Because we know the demands of increased movement of goods and the demands of places that are growing in residences and jobs means, you know, there's a lot of interaction between, say, heavy vehicles and people either walking, biking, or passenger autos. And that we want to be able to think about the best ways to enable their safe movement. And it's about connecting to community life. And that's where this goal really tries to also connect to the public, to public health outcomes and consider, well, what are things we can do that are helping in those kinds of outcomes? Whereas in the past, we haven't really had connections to public health so much in transportation planning. On social equity, we're trying to acknowledge and account for existing inequities and harm by past decisions. And we're really trying to, instead of increasing or continuing burden of negative effects that have been related to those past decisions, we're trying to look to the future. We're trying to get people to the decision-making table who traditionally haven't been at the table before, thinking about low-income communities of color, but also thinking of seniors and other underserved groups and people with mobility assistance needs too. And about looking of what's our connection to reducing the household transportation costs as for an increasing amount of people, and this isn't just Oregon, but we do find that the cost of transportation, whether it's owning, operating a vehicle or getting a hold of needed service such as dial-a-ride, are getting more expensive. And they're a bigger share of people's monthly incomes. And as far as mobility, one thing we're trying to do is we're trying to build the definition of mobility so that we're making it as much about access as to the reliability of a trip in time. So that we're thinking about people being able to get access to jobs, get access to critical services, and get around safely in their own neighborhoods. And that even goes down to the design level. So we're making connections to certain approaches. If you've heard of ODOT's Blueprint for Urban Design Effort, we did in the last two, three years to help think about designing our infrastructure, our system, our roadways to fit the context that surrounds it. Stewardship of Public Resources is really about what we need to think about in securing sustainable, reliable funding. And it's about aligning investments and issues such as the disaster recovery, thinking about the fires in 2021. And other issues that have been unpredictable and in some ways asymmetrical in the way we've thought of in the past of building our revenues and forecasting our needs. So we're also trying to enable other ways of building revenue. That includes road user charge. It thinks about tolling, but it does not mandate tolling. It thinks about how we do weight-based mileage charging for delivery of goods on the system. So it's really trying to think about what's going to move us away from the unsustainable trajectory that gas tax has been on for some time. And it's about preparing for, you know, what's very uncertain in terms of climate-related issues, as well as economic-related issues, and even seismic resiliency too. And I've talked already about putting that high priority on safety and saving lives. One thing we've introduced in this plan is the Federal Highway Administration has an approach to improving transportation safety known as safe systems. It's sort of a holistic aspect of what we can do from planning all the way down to design and construction, as well as education for improving safety outcomes. So we've put that type of guidance approach into this plan. And on sustainability and climate action, one thing we're doing is trying to be both in step and consistent with legislative mandates, governor-executive action, and local efforts on achieving GH, greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. We are considering, you know, in this plan, policies that would reduce the per capita vehicle mile travel for passenger vehicles, recognizing though, different areas of the state have different means of how they're able to get around. They may not have great provision of transit. They may have to commute quite a ways for jobs. We're thinking about what might get us there, looking at that long-term trajectory. And about increasing energy efficiency, thinking about electrification of the system. How can we be a good partner, we meaning ODOT, in the electric vehicle fleet transition, for instance? So at the, chapter seven, the last chapter of the plan, we really know that with all of these policies, with all these goals, with this great vision, what, how is ODOT going to make that happen? What's the accountability model? So we've put in this plan 10 actions. That from these actions, it's really getting at that call to action that I alluded to earlier in the policy framework. And it's what we could do in thinking about long-term, medium-term, and short-term actions. It's about securing sustainable, resilient, reliable transportation funding, reducing fatalities, serious injuries, maximizing the life cycle of existing assets, compact development supported where we can in reducing trip lanes where it's feasible, electrifying the multimodal transportation system, investing resilient, efficient, sustainable movement of commodities and people. Just make a note that resiliency is a theme found throughout this plan. It kind of means different things. There's seismic resiliency, should we have a Cascadia earthquake event? And that has its own connotation, but there's also just the resiliency of the plan itself. Do we have policies and do we have actions that are going to help us be nimble when unpredictable things happen, such as another large wave of wildfires or erosion issues on coast that, as you all know, are hurting the system we have now? As well as leveraging data and technology. We know that there are a lot of things coming about in transportation. People think of automated and connected vehicles, but there's any number of things going on, including the age of big data that we're in, in that we have a large amount of data on a small device, such as a phone, that it would enable people to secure their own means of getting a ride. So we need to consider all those things in terms of what can ODOT do? What does ODOT need to do in looking at partnering with the private sector, as well as supporting local government? So as I had mentioned before, we are in a public comment period for this draft plan. In the Zoom chat, I'm going to make sure that you would have the link to the website. That's where the plan can be accessed, though the fact sheet that is part of your packet also points to that too. And there's people, people can comment either by utilizing the comment submission form or by going straight directly to that email address. One way or the other, the comment submission form is going to automatically go to that email address, OTP@ODOT.com. O dot dot org and gov, but we also accept emails. There, I anticipate. Public agencies, commissions, committees, officials may want to submit letters. So that's absolutely part of what we accept in public comment period. And I want to make note that there will be a virtual public hearing on the plan, and that's where we will. Allow for, I believe about three minute testimony from interested parties throughout the state. That tune into the virtual meeting for two hours starting at ten AM. We record those comments and that's also part of the record as well as all of the comments that we, that are submitted to us. Through May twelfth, May twelfth will be the end of our public comment period. And looking at this timeline chart, you'll see that. After close of public comment period. The project team will take about a month to review comments. We're also going to share those with our policy coordinating committee. That'll sort of be their last action. Is to hear and advise on how we might approach certain comments. And then we will take a large package that will include. Any revisions we make to the plan that, that's already out for release now, but we may make some revisions based on comment. As well as our, a record of public outreach, all of the testimony. And that goes to the Oregon Transportation Commission. For what we are targeting as July thirteenth, they have a scheduled meeting. And we're hoping that is their action to adopt the Oregon Transportation Plan. Hopefully, we will thread the needle in all those tricky ways. So thanks a lot for your time. Here's, here's a slide I can leave off with, with the website. As well as the project email and very available and happy to. Answer questions offline after this meeting too, if you have any. So with that, I really appreciate the time and opportunity and would be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. I think you gave us a good overview of. The work that's been going on and where it's headed. So I'll open it up to any of the commissioners here to ask questions or. Get clarifications if anybody has any. Start here with the seated members, five of us here and then. If somebody from the virtual world has something they can chime in, just using their voice. Anybody have anything?
I have a comment for. Is this something that you're going to read through the plan and?
I'm sorry.
So Adam, the question from one of our planning commissioners, Commissioner Johnson was whether or not staff was going to be reviewing the plan and providing. Providing comments. We can do that as time permits. I, I will admit it has not been the highest top priority for us. But it is something that we can do. And specifically, the question was with regard to Clatsop County and how it might impact us. If I could, I also had a question kind of along those lines and you had mentioned, Adam, that. Our local plans have to be consistent with the OTP. So will the county be mandated to update its TSP once? This plan is adopted?
That's a great question. The adoption of the OTP does not. Confer to local TSPs that they would be found not in compliance at there because local. Transportation system plans are on their own clocks, if you will, for when they're to update. So it doesn't trigger that formally. There are of course things going on that have, that are going to necessitate. Transportation system plan updates, but that's not related to the OTP but related to, if you're familiar with. DLCD's rulemaking, climate friendly equitable communities, particularly the MPOs. The MPOs are going to be updating their plans and then we anticipate in the next five years addressing the, those rules. As to the OTP, I guess it's going to kind of have to be played out in terms of. The local TSP clock that you're, you work under and when you're due for your next updates. And anyways, we as a, as the statewide transportation planning unit. Can help consult with you on what that might look like. But as a, as hard regulatory aspect goes, I, I don't think that's really what's going on. I think that. Instead, it's going to be about some of these other things that will be happening over the next few years.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. I was just curious to what extent the, the planning that you've been doing. Looks at the, kind of the interstate as, aspect. How our transportation connects up with our adjacent states of Washington, Idaho and.
Or Nevada and California.
That's a good question. We, prior to starting the plan, we took a look at. Understanding that, as you all know, if, if you look at things from an economic sector standpoint. Different regions of the state are definitely have. The specialize in different aspects of industry. And one of those things is we have to consider, you know, ODOT is, or excuse me, Oregon is an export. Oriented state. Our, our economy is, is largely driven on the fact that we export think goods. So in that look at the economic regions, we tried to understand. What are, what might be, what are the issues on the system? And that includes, you know, the interstates connecting in Washington and California, for instance. Of what are those needs and what are those issues? That are. Either of, of great concern and, and that we're seeing the wrong, you know, troubling trends on the. On those regional aspects or where we're seeing some real strong kind of economic headwinds. So we consider that in the context of thinking about. How the other states fit in. And then another way we thought about the interstate system in the other states. Was if you're all familiar with the concept of the Western Electric Highway. It's, I believe, a large amount of I five and some of the other corridor areas, the interstate. Have been recognized for targeting kind of. The need for investment to ensure. Our, our economic thriving so of the delivery of goods in California, Oregon and Washington. And targeting those investments so that we have charging infrastructure. We understand. We have to understand too, what, what charging infrastructure is appropriate, given the scale, what kind of movement of goods we're talking about. If it's long haul freight, we've got big challenges because the, the range right now of electrifying a medium. Duty truck, for instance, is not the same as the, the. Transportation goods. Economy and supply chain that we've set up that, you know, you typically would need a range of five hundred miles. For a long haul truck and we don't, our charging infrastructure hasn't gotten there yet. So this plan is also trying to think of that. Aspect of what's, what, what's, what's our need? What's, what could be our focus on the interstate system? And I will note, in addition to electrification, because. Electrification is not as viable and not as ready. For certain areas of the state. I believe a portion of this, of I five and Southern Oregon. Is also a special corridor for hydrogen, for targeting investments in hydrogen. So. We've tried to consider those things in aspects of. What our investment scenarios look like and where our policy direction is going.
Very interesting. I'm, I'm wondering if you, just in a general way, could. Maybe just quickly give me an idea of how much. Of the thinking on transportation was by transportation types. Single vehicle use highways versus the possibilities of rail and also. What's our air travel connections with other states? Is it deemed? Sufficient and on track to keep up with the future or? Just, just real brief sketch of that. I'm just kind of curious and I guess I should read the plan because. I have a lot of questions, but I'll, I'll do my homework.
Sure. What I would say is one thing we needed to recognize where I alluded to drivers of change in chapter. That's those exogenous pressures, if you will. What is absolutely trending in, in terms of increased demand? Is for goods in this, in the state, throughout the state and that. That concerns, you know, not just ports, but local delivery as well. So what is? Problematic and challenging on a national and global scale is that those demands are increasing everywhere. And our supply chain system is very vulnerable to disruption as I think was shown during COVID. Response. So we do, in our scenarios, consider that we. In order to achieve certain things that would mean reliable delivery of goods, for instance. And reliable, reliability of the system for people in rural areas. Who need, who may have to go travel quite a bit for access to services all the way down to. Higher dense areas in their transit needs is the demand is essentially outweighing the supply. So it's about where are we going to target our investments to get those to meet supply. More adequately and I would say definitely the increased demand for movement of goods is one of those. Aspects where there's, there's concerns about the readiness of the system for that. I also want to make one more or a mention of the demographic trends that we've had to consider. Being that we're looking out to twenty fifty. Oregon's economy, of course, depends a lot on the workforce and workforce age people. But as demographic trends go, we're, we're in the more in the higher median age realm. And we're trending upward that way. And that's a fancy way to say we're getting older. And what it means is in order to maintain the economy and the demand that we've come to expect. We're going to need more people coming into the state who are workforce age to get, get, get those jobs fulfilled. And get the kinds of specialization and training we need. And there, there is a big question in the part of what we try to address in the plan is. Are we accounting for that? Do we understand that? And on the other side of that is if we are indeed having this increase in median age and. And people aging out of the workforce, it means that there's an increased need for the kinds of services. Aging, the, the aging people and their families need. So I think that the balance is a big question and the OTP is trying to address. Some of these asymmetries because we're, we're really trending on big needs of demand. And we're trending the wrong way on the revenue and the aspect of the system's ability. To be able to maintain that economy, if you, that, that economic growth and. The, the viability for the state.
Thank you very much for that. There any other questions from commissioners here? Anybody online want to raise their hand with a question? Commissioner Meg Dyer. Okay, well, thank you very much unless there's anything else from staff to say. I appreciate your presentation and. Wish the process to go very well and quickly and. Thanks for getting it done.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you, commissioners. This is great. Yep, as I said. I'll make sure that staff has the presentation because that has some of that information too. So I thank you all for the opportunity. And hope you're enjoying your spring. Take good care.
Thanks again. Hey, well. Now we're going to move into a work session. And discuss more on housing. We took it up last month and now we're into part two. And maybe with some more specifics on. Ways that we can change some of our. Development code kind of language to encourage more housing units to be constructed. So I will ask staff for the presentation.
Thank you. Alright, so this is really to pick up where we left off last month. So Clancy, if you can go down, just to recap what we talked about last month and to see if there were any questions about that. We had a brief introduction to Goal Ten and how that operates. Basically, Goal Ten is designed to direct the most dense development and the most urbanization into areas that are within urban growth. Boundaries and incorporated areas of cities. The county's role or any county's role in the state in. Supporting housing is sort of a second tier to what development should be occurring in the incorporated areas. And within those urban growth boundaries. And then we talked briefly about some of the past and ongoing projects and initiatives. That have happened here in Clatsop County with regard to housing. So looking at the most recent things. We've got the executive orders that came down from the governor's office. Which resulted in the passage of House Bill two thousand and one, just a week or two ago. There is a companion bill with that. I think it's House Bill fifty nineteen. That is the funding portion of that. And you'll see in today's news, I believe, that the homeless piece of that has been approved. For those first few counties that were initially approved for emergency homeless funding. And so there's a lot of money tied to this and a lot of proposed legislation this year tied to housing, housing analysis, homeless housing. All, anything housing, it's being talked about at the state level right now. Along with that is Senate Bill ten thirteen, which in its current formation would require counties to allow one RV. On every property, well, I'd say rural, rural residential land to have someone live in there. So there are some concerns that we have and some of the other counties share that, these concerns with regard to health safety. RVs are not regulated under building code, so they don't have building inspections. They aren't built to the same standard as a stick built home, obviously. What we see sometimes here in Clatsop County is that people like to modify them to put in wood burning stoves. Or heaters or some other type of amenity, which can be very dangerous. So we, we definitely have some concerns about the bill, the way it's drafted, but right now it is moving forward as it's currently been presented. We talked about Project Turnkey, which is funding that we got to purchase the Columbia Inn down here on Marine Drive to turn into transitional housing. There's also work at the state level with the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. This is going to be. Basically, the way it's proposed is can become an annual report that looks at unmet needs in the cities. And then projects how much needed housing, housing is needed on top of that. And then will kind of set a standard for how much housing each city should be building every year. And then there are potential penalties that come along with that if a county or a city doesn't make progress towards that goal. And then finally, the last thing that we talked about, we are working now with the county regional housing task force. We did in March, I believe, a funding event. To meet with groups like USDA and DEQ. And to talk about funding opportunities for housing, especially in rural areas. And our next meeting will be sometime in April, probably. And, uh, our next meeting will be sometime in April, uh, probably, uh, towards the end of the month. And then finally, uh, the Housing Strategies Report from, uh, 2019, we covered that briefly last month and we're gonna talk about that a little bit more today as, in conjunction with the review of the zoning districts. So I just wanted to make sure before we moved on, if anyone had any questions about what we talked about last month. And so seeing none? All right, next slide, please. Okay, so when we talk about zoning in Clatsop County, our zoning is layered and our land use regulations are layered up in a pyramid sort of shape. And at the bottom of the pyramid, you have your comprehensive plan, which lays out very generally where things will go in the county. So we have, you know, residential, we have, you know, it's a little bit different than a city. So in Clatsop County, we have areas that are designated for just agricultural purposes. We have some that are general, uh, designated for conservation purposes, others where development will occur at a more dense level and other, uh, designations where development will occur but at a less dense level. And so in Clatsop County, we have six land use designations. There are conservation forest lands, conservation other resources, natural, the rural agricultural lands, which is your EFU zoning, rural lands, which should be your RA1, 2, 3, 4, 5, those zones, and then development, which will be our rural community, uh, zones that we're gonna talk about today. And so each of our zoning districts, we have 41 of them in the county, each of those falls underneath or on top of one of those six land use designations. So the land use designation is basically gonna say development lands, more intense development. The zoning category is gonna sit on top of that and say, okay, here's the type of development, here's the setbacks, here's the building height, this is how this more dense development is gonna look and what it can be. So, does that make sense?
It does.
All right, next slide, please. Okay, so, um, development zones often have a lot of common characteristics. Uh, they are often served by water and sewer districts. They are oftentimes in a rural community or they have a rural service area that provides services to them along with fire protection perhaps. Um, this is again, in the county, unincorporated county where you'll see the most dense development. It's not always development that's as dense as what you may see in a city, but is definitely more dense than what you would see in the rural agriculture zones. Um, we have, uh, didn't count them, but it looks like there's maybe eight or nine zones today that are development zones that we're gonna be starting to go over. Uh, the goal today is not to complete this exercise, uh, but to look at everything, start thinking about it. And I know staff has raised some questions that we have for the Planning Commission about how to change these zones and, um, you know, make housing more accessible in these zones. And I'm sure that you'll also have questions. Uh, so I put together a series of maps and we're just gonna flip through these right now, uh, and go down to, towards the bottom, Clancy, if you would please. Keep going, keep going, all the way down, down, down till you start seeing no pictures. Yeah, okay, stop. So if you go back up to the one that has the table, there you go. So what, um, to start our discussion, what we would really like to focus on today is I put the recommendations from the Housing Strategies Report back up on the screen. What we wanna try to do is start ticking some of these off. Where can we start making these changes in our codes? Where do they make sense? Where are they not gonna be applicable? Where have we already done some work or maybe completed some work? Uh, we don't need to talk about those items anymore. Uh, for example, with the ADUs, we did, uh, recently adopt amendments to allow them in all areas where we can allow them under state statute. Uh, the problem is we're waiting for the wildfire risk map to become effective so that we can start issuing permits. Uh, but in the meantime, maybe there's more work that we can do to promote that fact. I know a press release was sent out, but maybe we need to do more work to promote the fact that you can build an ADU in many places now in the county or will be able to once the wildfire risk map is adopted. Um, some of the changes that you'll see staff is recommending in our draft later is, uh, is to rearrange some of the zoning districts, take things like duplexes and instead of having them a conditional use, which is a $1,200 fee and, you know, a 10-day public notice, uh, just move it up to a type one permit, which would be an $85, basically over the counter review, uh, same as we do with single-family homes. And so I put these up mainly just for reference. And then, um, Clancy, if you go to the la- next slide, please. Some other items to think about as we look at these changes, uh, are to think about how is this gonna impact water and sewer capacity? Uh, some of our districts are very near or at capacity and opening up zones to more development may put water districts or sewer districts in a, in a situation where they have to turn people down because they can't provide the services needed to support those housing units. And that may be representatives from those districts come in and meet with the Planning Commission and have a discussion about what they can reasonably handle in terms of capacity because it does us, does us no good to, you know, open up development and to then just have somebody else turn down development instead of the county making it difficult. We put the onus on the water district, say, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have the water, we, you can't build here. So there, there are a lot of conversations we need to have as we move forward with these amendments, so it's not as simple as just looking at how the process works on paper and in terms of application fees and application review time. There are also support services that have to be in place to allow these housing units to be constructed. And if our districts don't have the capacity, and there was an article in, the story in last week, I think, about the, the fire districts and how they are at the breaking point, you know, because of increased number of calls due to tourism, due to increasing population, due to different types of populations that we're finding in our communities now. And so there's just a lot of things that have to be considered, so that's one of them. Uh, we need to think about if we increase development, what will be the traffic impacts? How, how will that change, uh, neighborhood character? And I know we talk about that. Um, and also, I put this on there and we've had various discussions about this, but what role does allowing additional housing in areas that are impacted by, um, flood plains, tsunami inundation zones or geologic hazard zones? You know, what are the limitations or should there be limitations? Maybe I shouldn't ask that question. But the state, the state Goal 7 says we have to address these limitations, um, regardless of whether anybody thinks there should be limitations or not, but, uh, under Planning Goal 7, we're gonna have to address them, so we can't escape it. So things to think about. So we put together, uh, the breakdown of the development zoning districts, this starts on page 13 of your agenda package. And we did put in some very simple, starting point discussion, recommendations to amend these codes. We also put in some questions that we would like to start having a discussion with the Planning Commission about. And so at, at this point, I'm really just gonna turn it over to you as the Planning Commission to start looking, um, beginning on page 13, start looking at what staff has proposed, looking at our questions, thinking about these considerations, uh, that are no longer on the screen and, um, just start having a discussion so that we can refine the amendment, amendments that we eventually wanna propose. I will stop there and does anyone have any questions about what we're gonna be doing today?
I, I don't have a question about it, but I, I have a question of what is our level of knowledge on a couple of things that, that apply, apply rather broadly to, to many of these areas that are individually broken out in our packet? And one of them has to do with, uh, this issue of, uh, having, uh, housing of some form allowed in industrial areas of various zoning categories. And so my question is, do we have a good idea whether we have sufficient industrial land available? And if, if we do, that's fine, but, uh, would building in those areas reduce it possibly to where we would have a, a lack in buildable industrial lot? Is that known very well?
Um, I, so I think the last time we took a very comprehensive look at that is when we initially adopted the comprehensive plan back in 1980. We have requested funding for this year to do an economic opportunities analysis, which would look at those trends in the county of where our employment sectors are and are likely to be over the next 20 years and determine whether or not we have enough land to accommodate that. And so that, uh, request for proposals is going to the board at a work session tomorrow evening. And if they are okay with it, we will publish that and put that out, uh, and then work probably over the course of the next year to identify, uh, what lands we would need and what trends we would be accommodating over the next 20 years.
So related to that, at, at this point, if we just go on the presumption there's probably enough industrial land where there could be some types of housing allowed in those areas, then if we later found out that there really is kind of a shortage, then I guess we'd have to go back and rethink that and adjust. Is that, is that the best approach to go with here?
Yeah, yeah, I think we could work with the assumption that, uh, you know, that we do have a sec- enough land, sufficient land. Um, I think you would not necessarily want to have single-family homes everywhere in your industrial districts, but there may be certain light industrial districts where multifamily housing, maybe as a conditional use, that does require an additional layer of review because you are gonna take industrial land out of circulation. You're gonna be putting residents into a place where there may be noise or odors or, you know, things associated with industry, uh, that may create conflicts. Um, or maybe we just decide that industrial lands really aren't the place to put any type of housing, it just doesn't make sense. But we, we're trying to throw out lots of different ideas for discussion and not take too much off the table.
Right, and then one other general one, um, is, is the idea of multifamily residential in the unincorporated part of the county versus looking for that to be more something that the cities would, would build and have in place. And, and I'm basing that on kinda my own analysis of, um, some stuff from our last packet that had, um, some tables showing how many housing units are needed between 2020 and 2040. And the, the, um, unfortunately, the breakdown was by North Coast Regional and that included Lincoln, Tillamook, Clatsop and Columbia Counties. And the number there was about 17,335 if you include what's needed for homelessness population and all that. So that's over a 20-year period and I, I just roughed out that that means Clatsop County's share might be like 4,000 units over that period, may, maybe not that much, but.
Did, I, I thought I had included the tables for the cities in last month's packet.
You did, and I was gonna, I was gonna, that's where I'm headed with this. Then I went through the cities and I totaled up each of theirs and theirs totals up, um, and let's see, that's for a, uh, that's also for, for a 20-year period. So it, that, that totaled to just over 3,000 units. So it looks like the county's share, and I, I know I'm getting kind of mathematical or arith- arithmetic here in my analysis, but that would say in, in the next 20 years we need to come up with about 1,000 units in the unincorporated area.
So, right, in the incorporated, not, not the unincorporated, cause again, this, these numbers were from the regional housing analysis, which became the Oregon Housing Analysis. Um, and they are allocating units only to the incorporated areas. So there's no allocation that comes to unincorporated Clatsop County and says, okay, the cities are gonna build 3,000 of these units, but you, you unincorporated Clatsop County have to build the rest. That's not set up that way because of Goal 10, because of Goal 11, which is public facilities and services, and Goal 14, which is urbanization. Those three goals are really gonna direct all of that development into the urban growth boundaries. So what we're doing here is almost above and beyond what we're required to do, but we are trying to assist in any way we can to address the housing crisis and to do as much as we can. Um, but really, uh, there, there isn't a lot that we're required to do, just to be frank. So when you see that analysis that has so many units in the, in the three-county area, it doesn't mean that it's gonna be equally divided between the three counties and then equally divided between the unincorporated and the cities in each county, so.
But, but do we have a number of what, that we're aiming at? Number of units per year to, to see if we're staying on track, to see if we open things up sufficiently to allow increased densities, to know whether we're, we're heading in the right direction here or if there's still stumbling blocks. I mean, there's no point in opening up everything in the entire county to multifamily dwellings if it's not really needed. So I, I think it's important to have some target in mind, some, some analysis of how much we have to accomplish to know whether we're being effective in, in allowing more housing to be built.
So the county doesn't have a target. We are not, like the cities, responsible for meeting, providing a, a preset number of units. So, you know, if, if, if you feel because there's no benchmark that has been established, that the state has not laid down a minimum number for the county to obtain, that this is a futile exercise, then we can end our discussion right now and we can move on to other things because we have a long list of stuff.
I don't think it's futile.
But, and I say that facetiously, I'm not trying to just be snarky and snippy, but, um, by reviewing our zoning code, we have the opportunity to allow people to do something that maybe they can't currently do now. I mean, we don't get a lot of inquiries for multifamily dwellings, but we do get some and we direct them to the few small areas that are zoned currently for multifamily in unincorporated county. Um, but there's not much land that, to accommodate that type of development. So the, I mean, and we've never done any analysis of, you know, which came first, people built because we gave them multifamily or they didn't build because they didn't, couldn't find any multifamily land. I mean, we just don't have that kind of information. Um, I think by amending the code on paper, first of all, which is where we're gonna start, I don't think does harm, um, as long as it's done in a thoughtful way and, which is why we're trying not to rush through this, but to think about water capacity and things like that. Um, but it, it provides people with more opportunities than they have today. And then without doing those changes and seeing how developers react to it and if more housing is constructed, I don't know that we can really make a determination as to whether or not the amendments are effective because we just, we're so limited and, and so constrained in how we allow housing right now, where I think we don't have to be as constrained in certain instances. Um, and in some instances, we can't make changes. It's gonna be state law and we're gonna be stuck with what we've got. So your two-acre minimum lot size in the rural lands areas, that's not gonna change. So, you know, we're trying to pick off the things that we have control over, that we can loosen up to see if it makes a difference or helps.
I agree with Gail completely. I, I disagree with that we shouldn't, that we should limit certain areas just because we don't know a certain number. Regardless of that number, if we address what you're talking about and, and we rezone and, and make these things available, it doesn't mean that everybody can go out and build them. Cause if, me as a builder, if I wanna go build something, I have to come up with a list and go water, sewer, fire, right down that line. So just because it says it's allowed in this area, it doesn't mean I'm gonna be allowed to do it anyway. If I don't have enough water, if I don't have the, the sewer capacity or the septic capacity on that certain piece of land, just because it says it's, it's an outright use or a conditional use, doesn't mean you're gonna be able to build it anyway, but it gives you the opportunities. I, I think we should be more proactive than reactive and if we set a benchmark of, say, 1,000 in the next 20 years and we, we have this area, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna approve this area but not this area, yeah, this area, not this area, it makes no sense to me. I think that it should be simple, I think it should be across the board and we should start simplifying all these requirements. Address the zones, if we need to rezone areas, if we have two-acre zones that make no, no, and it should be one-acre zone, areas.
You, you can't do that. We're not gonna be able to change. You, you can't do that, we're not gonna be able to change that, that's fixed by the state.
We can rezone.
You can't. I mean, unless you can show that it meets the requirements for a rural community, that it's got, you know, water, potentially sewer, and there are other criteria in terms of mix of uses and things. So that's a very different bar, you're gonna have to meet very specific standards under Oregon administrative rules to do that. So it's not just a matter of, Gail gets out her pen and changes RA two to RA one and we all go back to one acre lots, it's not gonna be that simple.
Yeah, I have a question regarding that. Um, you have lots of other lands that are zoned like RA five, or could that be brought down to, uh, RA two level? And then you could, clustering would be allowed, where you could go to a one acre lot size with some set aside area utilizing a clustering.
You could definitely, we, we could look at, at what we, we would call down zoning, down zoning, up zoning, up zoning, uh, where you would actually allow more density or smaller parcels, um, that's a possibility.
And the reason, the reason I say that is because I don't, in my view, trying to figure out a way to put multifamily rural Clatsop County is not, not really the answer. And rural Clatsop County is more suited, in my view, to single family residences. How, uh, more single family residences where we have roads or public along those county roads. Being rather than trying, I don't disagree that we, we should. But I think one area that I'd like to look at is just, basically, the public.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about rural lands in the future, but I wanted to focus today just on the development zones, so that we can start with the, the easiest ones first. Because as you get into rural lands, the conversations are gonna be more difficult and we're gonna have more restrictions at the state level and what we can and cannot do. So I will make note of your comments, um, I certainly think that staff has talked about this before with the up zoning and going, changing some of those RA fives and things.
So, do you need to change the zone or can you change the allowed use within, some changes are very difficult. Allow a two acre lot.
Well, it kinda defeats the purpose, because then you're just creating a duplicate to the RA two zone.
Right, well, that's true, but now we have a RA two zone that, you know, gets away with the RA one zone.
Right, and I don't disagree that they didn't, that they didn't do that correctly, and I don't know why they did it that way, but, you know, and I think it's cleaner to just go to an RA two, because then everybody knows just by what their zone is, what their requirements are. If you say, I'm RA five, but I have a two acre minimum lot size, how do I know that? Well, you gotta go read the code. Okay, so, and here's the subsection.
Easy rather than reasonable.
Mm.
For what the end, no, that's coming down the road.
Yeah, I think there are many in the county who feel that way as well, so...
I think that, I think that we're, state level, that we're considering allowing RVs all over the place, use are not exactly the direction that we wanna go.
That's exactly where I was trying to go with it. I mean, it's allowing more density in, in some of these areas. I mean, we got, there's a lot of them that we can look at. I, I, I mean, I see, I see us moving east, west, can't move north and south, so where are we gonna go, right? We're gonna go east, we have, we have Lewis and Clark Road, we have the main line, I know there was talks before of developing that area, we have areas up there that are agriculture, forestry, we have, uh, uh, forestry zones. Those areas are gonna be where we're gonna have to start thinking, oh, and, and we're gonna have to, I mean, if you have eighty acres up there, say, on Lewis and Clark, why can't we divide that in half or thirds or, and start getting more lands available? If, if we start knocking this off a little bit at a time, that thousand or fifteen hundred capacity that we're gonna need in the next twenty years, there's areas for people to go. I mean, there's, I mean, we talked about this as builders, because we were constantly looking for, for properties to do this with, and even though there may be some available, it doesn't mean that there's ever gonna be houses there. I mean, there may be people that just hold on to their lands and where, where we're stuck with still have no housing for people to, to come into the area. So we need to make the opportunity a little more. As far as multifamily, you know, I, I, I'm kinda torn on that, I don't, I don't think that that's the greatest of ideas on these bigger properties. Uh, the commercial zones, um, I think it's probably better to look at them there. Industrial zones, uh, while you guys were discussing it a second ago, I was thinking maybe like, uh, what if it's not its primary use? Like, if I have a residential lot in the county and I wanna put a shop there, I have to put an apartment or something in it, right? Because it has to be the primary use. Uh, maybe if there's industrial buildings where you've got shipping going on or something like that, if they, if they wanted to do a, a residential something or other in there, it had to be secondary to the primary use. Does that, does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? You know, if you wanna provide a, an apartment in your industrial shop for one of your employees, or two apartments in a, in a shipping area, as long as it meets all the fire codes and everything else and there's capacity for it, um, that might be something. But putting a, a apartment complex right next to, I, I'm, I'm just thinking about all these shipping areas, like, I'm thinking Jeffers Gardens area where a lot of the industrial stuff is, I'm not sure that that would be the best use of that industrial type property.
That's kinda, that's kinda laid out for us actually in the packet, I think. I think when we, there's a couple of places where, where staff has highlighted the idea of how, how about a, a security, you know, a, a residence for security on an industrial property or that kinda thing, and should that be allowed? So I, I think we're gonna get to that going through the-
Right.
... the packet you have here.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe with our forty minutes left, we should just try to go through this a little bit, because I've, I hear a lot of things I agree with you on and, um, and I, I guess my only point is, there isn't much multifamily residential in the unincorporated county, but my, my idea on that was to, uh, go exactly the opposite, don't allow single family dwellings in, in those zones and, and require them to be multifamily, and you could define multifamily what you want, but it, it seems like there's a small enough acreage of that and they're in localities such as Westport has a couple. Why, why not just make those a required high density? Use, use those properties that way, reset that way in the first place.
The industrial zones are Westport, Jeffers Gardens, correct? Is that?
Um, actually, there's a little bit, uh, of industrial out by Miles Crossing, there is some out in Napa, there are some in Westport. Uh, Clancy, can you go down, so actually, go up first, see where it says RCCLI? Yeah, alright, so RCCLI is rural community, um, light industrial, and so that, I believe, is-
That's Westport.
That's Westport, yeah.
And Westport's on sewer, right?
Uh, there is a sewer district out there, yeah, but I'm not sure that, that's, uh, exact boundaries and what it serves, but, um, can you go down to the next slide, please, Clancy? Yeah, and so this is out in Napa. And then if you, I think those are the only light industrial that we had in there, so... Yeah, it's just those two areas. And I didn't include rural community industrial, because that is a little bit higher intensity industrial area. Uh, same with the heavy industrial and the, um, marine industrial, I didn't include those, because they're just heavier uses. Um, before we go on though, I, I need to address a couple of things that you said, Commissioner Kroscher. Um, so first of all, um, multifamily, you know, I know everybody's thinking, well, why do we want multifamily and brown smite, which is not what we're looking at. I think we're thinking probably more this Jeffers Garden area, because there is rural commu-, uh, uh, community residential land that's behind all those businesses that front on business one-on-one, and that may be, it's in a flood plain, but there could be opportunities to elevate the buildings and do a quadriplex or a triplex. That's considered multifamily. So it's not gonna be the Astor Building, sitting down in Miles Crossing or down there. Um, so that's one thing to keep in mind. I also wanna make sure that we're very clear that there is no one thousand unit for unincorporated counties. So I don't want this number to become set in stone and everybody tosses this about, there is no number, okay? And it, it's not a thousand, it's nothing. The housing needs analysis allocates the housing need to the cities. Clatsop County does not have an allocated housing need. So I know we have, uh, people from the historian on, listening to us today, and I don't want them to come under the impression that Clatsop County has a mandate to build a thousand houses in the next twenty years. I just want us to be very clear about that. Um, and then you asked about these eighty acre farm forest parcels, and so there, the process to change those and convert them into smaller parcels and open them up for development, uh, you're gonna need to go through a goal exception process. And you're gonna have to show the state why these are the only lands that you have that need to be converted to allow housing, that there are no other places in the county that you can put housing in. And it's gotta be these parcels. So, and it's a very, very, very high bar and it's a very long process. So you can do it, but it is, it's a lot of work to do it, but it can be done, but just letting you know that it's not as simple as we just say, you know, we really need some housing up here, the main line's here, you know, let's just divvy it up in a twenty acre parcels and let, let's build four houses. So it's just not gonna be that easy.
So as, as far as doing that, that's, that's all at the state level?
It, it has to go through the state. There, there is a process we go through here locally, which will involve ordinances, uh, to take exceptions to the urbanization goal, Goal Fourteen, to show why the development has to go here and it can't go in a city or it can't go anywhere else in unincorporated county. Um, depending on what kind of facilities there are out there to serve it, we, we may need take an exception to Goal Eleven to allow additional public facilities that normally would not be allowed. Um, so you're looking at that, you'd need a Goal Four exception to say why it shouldn't be forest land anymore. So we're gonna go through that process here locally, we're gonna send all that to the state, the state's gonna look at it and either say yay or nay, and it's gonna be a really high bar for, to get them to say yay, so...
It's like we, we've set ourselves up as, for a failure. We need, we need, we need, but we can't, we can't, we can't. Seems to be the, the, you know, we need housing. We, if we can't, can't lower our, raise our capacity on, you know, RA five, RA two, whatever it is, it's a block, every, we get past that.
Remember, so part of what we're doing is we're looking at the stuff we can control. There's a lot of state control on the farm and forest land. They're resource lands, they're protected under the state planning system, and it's been set up that way since nineteen seventy-three. And it's, you, to change that, you're gonna need to go to Salem and work with the legislature. Remember that our system is set, our state land use system is set up to direct growth into the cities. So it's not the unincorporated farm forest lands that are intended to be changed over and opened up for development. The whole purpose of the statewide planning system was to protect our farmland and to protect our forest land, so that it doesn't just become, you know, the next Hillsborough or Beaverton or something like that.
That's what was- That farmland they've been paving over-
Well, that's-
Twenty-five years.
That's why Senate Bill One Hundred got passed in nineteen seventy-three, is because the Willamette Valley was-
I understand.
Yeah, but how much has happened in the last ten years? And there's, the last four exits on twenty-six, one ten years ago. But it obviously can be done. I'm not advocating that we-
Well, the Portland metro area has a whole different system of government and land use laws and how they're applied, and I don't know that you want to become Portland metro, but, but if that's-
No, no.
I just think, I, I think-
If that's the vision, then we can, we can do that.
No, but I think there's gotta be a, there's gotta be a middle ground somewhere. I'll just give you an example, my farm is two hundred, two hundred acres contiguous, one house on it.
Well, see, you can-
But yeah, you can go, you can throw a rock and hit a house that's on a two acre- That house, you can throw a rock and hit another one that's on a- You know what I mean, if there's no, there's no, the county-
Yeah.
And so you have all these parcels that are EF or EFU, eighty acre minimums, that aren't eighty acres. All of them are held well under that. You go right up the road and maybe there's some- And, and change the landscape, cost is, down the road on RA five, or one that's on a forty acre parcel. Leading to is, I mean, I understand it's not like, fairly, but, data, somewhere, I think that needs anyways. Because if you, if we look at what's, uh, lots available that are, you know, for example, not a, a two acre lot in RA five. Lot in RA, get, take those out of the equation, the ones that aren't in a, aren't in a, build zone, say, or will be after that's updated, none of Susanne's zone, not ag forest, not resource land. A whole lot is left.
So, one thing that you said, um, to clarify, if, if you have a substandard piece of property, say it's zoned RA five, but your property's two and a half acres, it doesn't mean that you cannot develop it. If it is a lot of record, if it was legally created, it can still be developed, it just means that you won't be able to partition it further. And, you know, even at two and a half acres, you're not gonna be able to partition it further at this point in time because of that two acre minimum lot size anyway.
Right.
So, so even if you, it just wouldn't happen, but just because your property is substandard in size for the zone, doesn't mean it can't necessarily be developed, just to be clear about that.
Well, you, you know, a lot of this discussion sounds like we're re, we're going back in time to, to decide what kinda county we wanna have. Uh, we know that we're about eighty-five percent forest, maybe, uh, a few percent farmland, and the whole idea of making it difficult to change, uh, the land use from those ag and forestry, um, uses was to preserve the forestry industry and to preserve farming. And so I think Clatsop County can still do that and can still have a lot of farm and forest and yet still have housing. I, I just can't believe that the number of lots, when you look at, at the maps, uh, online, at how many lots are out there, that, that there aren't a lot of them that, that could ultimately be built on through some business transaction where you get a seller, somebody to sell their lot to, to put a building on it. Um, I, I don't know if we have any, again, I'm always looking for statistics here, I know, numbers, but how many lots do we have out there that don't have a structure on it that right now are in the RA one, two, five category? And, and how many of them are in these, um, RCC multifamily residential? Um, how many acres are available there that, that could be built on? And finally, I'll just throw out another idea on the, on, that the county might be able to do to facilitate higher density in some of these areas is, can, can there be a consideration at some point of the county providing at least assistance or maybe even funding to expand sewer systems? Or is that, there's some rule around that, that we're not supposed to create a sewer system to increase housing?
Right, so-
Could you go through that?
Depending on what your sewer expansion consists of, it's, if it's, to expand it out into the rural lands in order to increase development, that's not gonna fly.
But, but it's existing-
But you could increase the plant capacity to serve the existing boundary, and there may be the ability then to do that.
Yeah.
But-
So those are some options.
So I think that we've, have discussed a lot of interesting ideas, some of which we can do, some of which we can't. Um, I would like to bring our attention back, though, to what we're gonna maybe discuss today, maybe.
I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea.
So, because this is stuff that we do have a lot more control over immediately. I know it doesn't address your main concerns, which are more in the zones that are designated as rural lands, but we will get to that. But these are the things that I thought would be pretty straightforward that we could start working on and maybe, you know, harvest the low hanging fruit before it falls off a tree and rots. Anyway, so if you want to go back to page 13, this is the Arch Cape Rural Community Residential Zone, which is the first zone in our code. They're not alphabetical, but there it is. One of the things that we as staff have proposed doing is taking that two family duplex, that dwelling unit, and moving it from a conditional use, which is a 10 day public comment period, $1,200 application fee, 12 day appeal period. That can add a lot of time and expense. And to move that up to a type 1, which is your $85 over the counter development permit. So I don't know if there are any discussion points about that particular recommended change.
I'll just say that this option comes up on, I think, all of the zones that we looked at.
Yeah.
And I'm in favor of doing that in all those cases. I see no reason not to do that. Not so much the width. I think in some places, the width, the width needs to be discussed.
Yeah, I had Julia Decker, our planning manager, raise an interesting point today, which I hadn't considered, is that if we do away with a minimum lot size, do we set ourselves up in the future where we allow people to create lots that are so small that everybody has to now come through for a variance? Because we let people create 30 foot wide lots and now they can't build a home on them. So I think when we get to that point, we need to have more discussion about that.
I agree too.
Right. So I'm going to take the duplex thing, and we will never speak of it again until we come back with an ordinance, unless somebody has anything else to add in the future. One of the other things in the...
One question.
Pardon? Are you thinking of adding like triplexes and quadrplexes? Well, that is a discussion for the planning commission to have. We, as staff, kept our initial recommendations relatively simple, just to try and get something approved. But I think it's a discussion that's worth having because I think there are zones where it may be appropriate to allow triplexes and quadrplexes. I know that we have someone who has expressed an interest in the Arch Cape Zone of doing some type of cottage cluster development for workforce housing, which is not currently allowed in our code here. So yeah, I think if you all, as a planning commission, want to have that discussion and tell us what you would like to see.
Talking about lot sizes, I think that the multifamily, instead of the word duplex, multifamily should tend to have lot size. And if you have a 5,000, 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 square foot lot, help dictate as to how many, because you need adequate parking, you need adequate space to do it. You know, their sewer or not, wherever the sewer is, that's, if you have to have septic, that's a whole nother thing. You can't put on a 5,000 square foot lot, you can't put a fourplex with a multifamily sewer system and parking and all that. So it kind of dictates what it does itself. So if we're talking about lot size and how many dwellings, you know, Seaside has a thing in the R3, the 10,000 square feet for a duplex, if it's 5,000 or less, or 7,000 or less, I think it's a single family. There's numbers on lot sizes there. They kind of correlate directly with each other. Going to have a minimum lot size, then lots are not all the same.
But they're, you know, if we're trying to make it easier, let's give people the opportunity to put on the lots that they... Something a hearing officer would make determination, or excuse me, funding on a multifamily. Who makes that decision on how many you get?
Would directly relate to the size.
Who's that?
Right. So if you look on page 15 of your agenda, you'll see that there's a table on there that currently spells out the minimum required lot sizes in Arch Cape. And so, and it's based on your slope. Because as your slope increases, you face additional challenge in terms of how you're going to lay out your house and required parking. So you can see that if it's just a 0 to 12% slope, the minimum lot size, assuming you're connected to sewer, is 7,500 square feet if you're just a single family home. And then it's double that if you're going to put in two dwelling units. And then as your slope increases, your lot size also gets larger as well to accommodate basically what is not a flat level surface for building a house and putting in parking. So you could, if you were going to do something like that, and I think you would want to have a discussion about whether triplexes and quadrplexes should be just straightforward type 1 permits or if they should be conditional use. That's something else that you'd want to have your discussion about. Some zones may accommodate that type of housing better than others. I will just be very blunt with you that if you do propose that, you will be met with resistance.
Oh, yeah.
Just so you know. I'm sure you all know, but I'm just letting you know. But yeah, it could be proposed. Again, this is an example of where we'd also want to have a discussion with the water district as we move through these amendments to see what the water and sanitary capacity is for Arch Cape as well. So, but, so we can note that as a possible amendment.
So just to be clear, I'm not going to bring this up.
Right.
I'm just saying...
In some areas, it could be considered. But I do think it's worth reading the little introductory paragraph for each of these zones, because it gives you kind of what that zone was created for, what value, land use values, where we're trying to preserve here. And Arch Cape Rural Zone is intended to accommodate the immediate and foreseeable demand for low density housing in Clatsop County's rural communities. The zone has been, you know, and it goes on. I think it's worth thinking about that. Do we really want to just reshape the entire county? I think there are places where you can have higher density, and it would be fine. It would fit in. It wouldn't detract from the values that have long been there that make it a place people want to live. You can create changes with densities that just are inappropriate to a very scenic setting. It just, that would be the wrong approach to do it in a blanket fashion.
I thought those were going through.
Yeah.
I also, there's another...
In some areas, I think it could be increased greatly.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think you're on the right track.
I do want to call to the planning commission's attention on page 14, item number 12, under section 4.0630. And staff is proposing to delete number 12. This is the only district where we require new road construction or road extension to go through a type 2 conditional use permit in the county. That, we had three in the past, maybe two years, one of which took almost two years to complete because it was appealed and appealed and appealed, and then remanded back to the county and appealed again. So it took two years to get approval to basically build a 40 foot extension of a roadway, an existing platted roadway. And so I wanted to put out there for your consideration and discussion the possibility of deleting that, since it is the only zone in the county where we do require public comment and review of...
Can you provide any history on why it's...
If Julia were here, she could probably tell you. And I don't know if she's online and can give us any background.
I would support that.
I am here, this is Julia, but I can't hear you all very well. I'm not quite sure what that was.
So Julia, the question is, do we know why in Arch Cape conditional use is required to build a private road or extend a public or private road?
We do. That actually came about in about 2009 or 10. It was part of ordinance 1001. And the Design Review Committee at the time lobbied the staff person at the time, who was a planner who's not with the county any longer, to add that to the conditional uses. And they actually added several things to the conditional uses. And it, the staff person at the time was kind of working with them. And it was reviewed by county council at the time, again, not our current council. And it just didn't receive a lot of vetting. It didn't receive any public comment. And the staff person at the time was in the process of moving to a new job, and it just got rushed. And there wasn't really good, a good review of it. And part of it stemmed, the committee's concern at the time, stemmed from a project that somebody else was doing on, and I can't remember the road, might have been up, it was on the east side of the, east side of the highway. And it was something that dragged on forever, and it had to do with whether or not the property owner was going to be making the appropriate improvements to create the public road. And it was kind of a steep one. And the committee got very involved in the design element of it, although there wasn't anybody on the committee who was a professional developer or who had design background in road development. So it was just kind of a, it just turned into a, kind of a neighborhood thing, I guess. But in the end, it was just kind of rushed through.
Yeah, well, thank you, Julia. I think I understand what you're trying to tell us. So I'm in support of that strictly and removing it as 12.
All right. Do you, we were just suggesting to delete it completely. We don't normally require new road development to go through that type of process? Okay.
I have a question, if I may. And we're still on page 14. We get down to number two. Educate me on community development director. Is that a county issue or a position? Or is that a local Arch Cape position?
No, no, no. I just had a lot of thoughts in my head there at one moment, sorry. No, the community development director is a county position. That's actually my position.
Ah.
So the community development director, in this current iteration, is in charge of land use planning, co-compliance, and building codes.
Because I was wondering why you use those terms in Arch Cape, but I didn't see them in other zones.
They are in other zones. You'll actually see this language in number two in some of the rural agricultural land zones that we'll get to in the future.
But not in the development, so I didn't see them in others.
Usually not, no.
You know, I saw that on accessory uses, and then I noticed again on height. In Arch Cape, you could request a survey or photographs. And I was curious, why in Arch Cape are we doing this? But it's okay in other zones, in the development area. Curious.
I think that's a very valid question, Commissioner Powers.
So on item number eight, where it says nursery or daycare center, is that?
We did, but it didn't actually, it doesn't actually go into effect until April 21st.
Okay.
So I haven't updated the code yet, yeah.
No insult intended.
Pardon?
No insult intended.
Oh, no, no, not at all. I, a funny image I had in my head.
Well, there's, I mean... Just countywide, there's no subdivisions of your department. Everything's at the county level, other than the city. So in the unincorporated county, there isn't some community that has a lower level authority with respect to planning. Isn't that true?
Yeah, when the board voted to disband the Arch Cape Design Review Committee in 2017, they were sort of acting as kind of a local area planning commission, almost. They did design review and looked at, as I understand it, variances and things, and weighed in on them, but not necessarily as the final decision maker. But once that board was disbanded, then that really took away anything that existed at that level. Okay. So to make a note of where we're at, so we haven't talked in depth specifically about Arch Cape, about the triplex, quadrplex, the quadplex issue. Do we want to cover that before moving on into the actual parcel size and lot coverage and items, so we can wrap that item up in this one? Do we have thoughts about triplexes and quadrplexes in the zone? And to Commissioner, Chair Farrar's point, when staff did start marking up the zoning districts, we did try to take into account the intent and purpose of each zoning district to try to be a little sensitive to the neighborhood character.
I'd like, I think I'd... Back to, I think it's just a thought that I had sitting here, like, only because it's, do we really want to make that black and white line that is... Probably thought through my own thoughts on it, so I think I'd like...
Okay. So then...
Currently, there are two family dwellings are allowed, right?
This will just make the duplex process easier for people to go through.
It's no longer, right. And in this case, in... We don't want to create lots that are tied, but... Guys, maybe just pull that out a little bit more, what is behind... Or yeah, or if we, or you know, what the argument against getting rid of it. If you still have to have a certain number of square feet and all the other things. Started to touch on it, I think, and then I think we got off on something else.
Yeah, so when I was initially thinking about this, my thought was, well, if your lot's an acre, do we really care how wide it is? But then, as Julia pointed out to me this morning, you know, what if we don't have a minimum? Then we have no way to tell people, well, you can't create a 30 foot lot. And if I've got a 10 foot side yard setback on each side, and that leaves me 10 feet to build on in my 30 foot lot, people, are we going to set people up to have to apply for variances? Because we've allowed them to create something that's basically not buildable at that point? And so what Julia suggested, which is a very good idea... is to think about what the required setbacks are, um, and then think about what's a reasonable building envelope. And so it may be that the lots can still shrink, but we might, but are, stay the same size, but we have maybe, um, a smaller minimum lot width, but still, that would still accommodate a reasonable development standard. Does that make sense?
Um, just out of curiosity, are there many lots existing now that are inordinately narrow? Or is this something that you want to avoid a, a sub- subdividing of, of property into lots that were too narrow?
Yeah, we, we don't want to set ourselves up for failure in the future. So, you know, right now, there may be some, most of, and I'm going to talk specifically about Arch Cape, but Arch Cape has a lot of old flats on it, and those are at fifty-foot platted lots. And there are probably some that are just individually owned, and somebody's got a fifty-foot lot that's considered buildable. But what we wouldn't want is to just take the lot width away completely, and then somebody says, well, I can divide this into two twenty-five-foot lots.
Right.
And you think people don't do it, but where I came from in Florida, on the beachfront, people would do that. And there were literally houses built on twenty-five-foot lots, so...
But, so, um, so the rule could be that an existing lot, if it's less than that width, would you still could permit building on it?
Right, if it's a buildable lot of record, or if it's a lot of record, um, then you can still build on it, even if it's upstandard.
So I don't, I don't see that, then, as particularly stringent, uh, requirement as listed here. If, if existing lots that are grandfathered in, or whatever you want to call it, uh, permissible to build on them, and they would have to, they would have to adhere to the setbacks, but, um, uh, they could be a narrower lot. Yeah, I, I don't find any problem with that, really.
Yeah, so if you...
Side yard setback.
Yeah, so if you go down to, on page fifteen, uh, number two, then that's where our setbacks come in. So if you're, uh, right along Highway one oh one, it's a fifty-foot setback, uh, in your front yard, and then as your street, uh, goes down in, uh, intensity, your setbacks allow you to build closer to the street. Uh, the rear yard setback is typically twenty feet in that zone. And then, uh, if you are adjacent to a resource zone, so farm, forest, uh, parks, aquatic natural, anything like that, you've got a fifty-foot setback. And your side yard setbacks are typically ten feet. Uh, if you have a lot that was created prior to September thirtieth of nineteen eighty, uh, that doesn't meet the minimum lot size, we give you a reduction down to five feet. So there's, there's a lot of vari- variables in there to determine what your setbacks are.
When Arch Cape was originally plotted, was it, you, uh, did you say it was mostly fifty-foot wide lots?
Mm-hmm.
So did, did that sixty-foot set all those up for failure? Or, or, there are lots of record before, so they would be exempt. They can, they can do whatever they want because they were lot of record before?
Right.
So is there a lot of property in Arch Cape that can be subdivided? In like the, the residential areas that are provided by sewer and water and all that? Is it, is there a lot of properties that this would pertain to?
There are, there's, I can give you a percentage. There is, there are pieces of sizable land that are, that is vacant in Arch Cape. Uh, the county owns several of those areas, which are the, um, parcels that we put out for, uh, surplus property a few months ago, and where we have some interest in. Uh, there's another piece that's for sale, uh, that I believe is also zoned, ACR CR, uh, that's, you know, maybe three, four, or five acres in size that could potentially be divided. So at this point, um, new lots being created, if they're served by sewer, would have to be created to be a minimum of sixty feet wide. And then if they weren't served by sewer, they'd have to be a minimum of a hundred and twenty feet wide.
One acre, and, so the, in the yellow, you guys are, you wanting to add that? And a minimum of a hundred and twenty?
No, that's, that's where we've got a question.
Oh.
So... So that's how it's currently worded. But you think if you're not served by sewer, you, you're going to have to have your septic drain field and your replacement field, and your house area building envelope, and your parking, and then think about your setbacks as well, and then any constraints that might be on your property.
The, the only thing I don't, I don't understand is if you have one acre, I mean, say it's a pie-shaped lot, and you have enough for a driveway right here, and you can put your house, your septic system, everything you need to do with all of your setbacks, you're not a hundred and twenty feet wide in the very front of it?
So...
What does that matter?
So if, if, if it was an established lot of record, it, we don't care. Um, if it was something you were going to create today that was a pie-shaped lot, that is probably, uh, we would have to look at it. I don't have the definition of lot width in front of me, and I think it's measured at the street, so I think you would need to have that frontage.
That's what I'm saying, what, what does that matter? I- if you have one acre, and you can put everything you want to put in there, why are they trying, why are we, why does it matter what the frontage is? I can see if it's, if it's square lots and we're, we're working with smaller lots, but if you're working with one acre, and, I mean, you only have a driveway. Say you have your fourteen-foot wide driveway that the fire department can access. Good, you can pay, you can put your utilities in. Why does it then have to be a hundred and twenty feet wide to... Why, why is that even a, a requirement? If you have a minimum acreage of one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know why specifically one-twenty. Uh, I know that when we do partitions, we are looking at twenty-five feet of frontage to be sure that you can accommodate, um, a roadway. Is usually what, one of the things that we look at. Um, specifically the hundred and twenty, I, I don't know why it was set up that way. Um, you know, that would be something we would have to see if we could go back and find. I'm sure it dates back to the nineteen eighties. Um, part of it may be just to keep, um, what is...
For that.
An established development pattern, perhaps, so that, you know, again, using Arch Cape as an example, you don't see many pie-shaped lots down there because everything was platted in a grid pattern. And so it is very much recta- rectangular.
Is that why you are, you guys or staff is asking this question? And you, is it the minimum parcel necessary?
Yeah, so the red, the red is staff's question. Because when I was looking at this, my, my initial thought was, you know, if you have, if you meet your one-acre minimum, does it matter if you're a hundred and twenty feet wide? But then, as Julia pointed out this morning, I think we need to look at some sort of minimum width for a lot because we don't want to set up a system where people do just create really skinny, long, twenty-five-foot wide lots that go way back, but you've got ten-foot setbacks on each side, and you've got a five-foot building envelope. It's not going to work. People are going to want to come in for variances, and you've just defeated the whole purpose of trying to make development easier in the county. So I think, in retrospect, I probably would not have put this question in. Uh, because I think it just will create more problems in the future than we're trying to solve.
I don't disagree with the minimum width. I mean, there's a minimum width for approach. There's a minimum width for an accessible driveway for fire and ambulance and, and everything else. I, I think that... Areas where you have for a roadway, I think it's fourteen feet wide width, a couple of feet on each side for... If it just has to be a hard...
Uh, I agree with there should be a minimum for access. Um... Uh, I mean, that's... Is there another way to... Or in the middle between an acre and a hundred and nineteen? No, but also don't want... Ever like, is there another way to, or a middle ground somewhere?
Well, one, one approach would be to, to consider something more like a, an average width, minimum average width. So that if you take the, a pie-shaped piece, you know, that pie can be kind of squat, or it can be kind of elongate. You can imagine that. If it's very squat, then even though the point of that land comes down to zero or maybe twenty-one feet, or whatever you were saying, but then it pans out and it doesn't go very far before it taps off, then, you know, you've got way over a hundred and twenty up here as, as an average width.
Mm-hmm.
Down here, at the, at the pointed end of the pie piece, you know, you've got widths going from one-twenty down to twenty-one feet or something. And you could, you could allow for unusual lot shapes by somehow looking at more, some kind of, um, average width to it. Which, uh, it, it's complicated. To me, I just like to think of squares and rectangular lots. Deal with it. That's the way land should be platted, in my view. But, um, I realize with topography, there might be a reason.
I was just, just going to say that some of the topography down there, if you...
There, there could be a reason you'd want some...
It could end up with some, just some, not necessarily a pie, but just...
Right.
Some irregularly shaped stuff.
Sure, yeah.
I'm fine with how it is.
Yeah, I'd, I would have to go back and research that, Commissioner Johnson. I don't know. Well, I think, again, with the one acre, you also need to consider that these are parcels that are not served by sewer. So they're going to need a septic drain field, a replacement drain field, and then room for footprint for the house and parking, and to accommodate any topography. So, uh, I don't know if one acre is necessarily completely out of line.
In Arch Cape, it may not be.
Yeah.
Does that differ from east side of the highway to west side of the highway?
No.
No, okay.
Is, is the water system supply all, all of the built lots down there with water? Or are some people on, uh, individual water supply?
As far as I'm aware, they are all served by the district.
Yeah, because they have to, uh, then they develop... Watershed, sorry.
Said that last year, right?
Pardon?
Said you said that last year, right?
Yeah, they purchased some additional land to protect their, their watershed.
Okay, I see we're at just a few minutes after the hour. I'm, I'm willing to extend on if people want to do that. But it sounds like we're kind of ready, maybe, to turn the page to a less, uh, unique sort of, (laugh) zone area. I think some of these other zones are, are going to be a little easier to go through in some ways. And I think it's, uh, too bad that we weren't able to get through all these, but I don't know. Do, do people have a, a schedule where they need to break off here, or, yeah? So, um, how about...
Yeah, again, we weren't expecting, uh, the planning commission to c- to complete all of this today. I think we had, um, a very vigorous discussion about the rural lands, uh, which, you know, slowed down our discussion on this today. But, uh, again, we don't need to complete the file in, in one meeting. I'd rather we take our time and deliberate carefully.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do it as homework, then? I know everybody's looked at this in detail, probably. I know I have. But maybe just go back through it one more time before our next meeting so that we can do it a little more efficiently. We got off on some generalities, and I think that was good, really, because so- some of those points apply to a broad, broad spectrum of these, uh, zones. So that was good to get out there. So I don't know if there's something quickly you'd like to, um, discuss, uh, Director Henrickson, on, on the, the later items in the agenda as far as our, um, your, your report?
Yeah, there, there are just a cou- couple of items I want to bring to your attention. Uh, yesterday, I sent out a reminder email that if you have not yet, uh, filled out your financial interest form, please do that by April fifteenth, and get that back to our clerk. I think it goes to the clerk, um, otherwise you'll...
It only goes, you go on my...
Or does it go directly to the state?
Yeah, it does, it goes to the state.
Um, yeah, so you avoid any financial penalties and fees for that. Um, also, uh, Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Croucher, your terms are going to expire on June thirtieth. And so if you are interested in being reappointed, you will need to resubmit your applications. And I've put information on that in the director's report, and I can send you a follow-up email on that as well. Uh, we did put out a call for applicants, as we do every time a term is about to come up, uh, so that, the deadline is May nineteenth for you to get your, uh, application and if you want to be reup- considered for reappointment. And then the interviews are going to be June seventh with the Board of Commissioners, and we're looking at reappointment on June twenty-eighth. Four years. You, both of you were appointed to fill vacant terms. So you filled Bruce Francis's term, and you filled Myrna Patrick's, so...
I, I just have a, June seventh is the day before graduation.
Okay.
We have scholarship stuff, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Okay, I will check and see if we can change that. If not, I think that, that would be a very good reason to not be at an interview. Uh, I also know that you've been through this interview process before. I know both of you have, so... Okay, uh, let's see. And next month, we are going to be bringing back the comprehensive plan, uh, updated, revised, prettied up, uh, for another review and recommendation to the board. And we are also going to be bringing the ordinance with the parking amendments to adjust parking standards. That will be coming back for public hearings next month. And I think those are the really important things I need to hit on, so...
Okay, well, with that, I think we'll adjourn the meeting, and, uh, thanks for all the good comments from all of you. Thank you very much. See you next month.
Thank you.